With roll call.
Councilmember Dahl.
Here.
Councilmember Deschler is absent. Uh, councilmember Kolb.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda in front of us, looking for an approval on this agenda.
Uh, did we... There was one thing we were gonna...
You were going to pull something?
No, but, yeah, but we were gonna table something.
Uh, that would be the last item on the agenda.
Oh, continue it.
Is that off here?
Yeah, um, item 6-6, the Bass Lake Road Streetscape Plans and Studies.
So, when we get to that, we can continue it?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so we'll just approve it as is. Solid, thank you. I'd make a motion approving the agenda.
All right, thank you, looking for a second, Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. So, we have a appearance?
Correct.
Presentation regarding the City of Crystal's... Oh, yes, of course we do. Um, and Jean is here for that.
Correct.
Jean, would you step forward?
Absolutely.
Can you fill us in on what the presentation is?
Absolutely. Uh, tonight, I am very pleased to, um, announce that the city has once again received the 2016 Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Um, the certificate, uh, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, um, that a city can receive. And so, it's a compliment to all of the city finance staff, as well as their management, for once again, um, achieving this particular certificate of excellence in financial reporting.
Nice job.
Thank you. Did... Any comments?
I'd just like to say, nice job. Very good, thank you.
So, um, that was Jean, she's our Director of Finance, uh, by contract. Uh, we've been working with her over a year now, I believe. Um, we've been kinda putting her through the wringer, so she's been going above and beyond with, uh, changing some of the way we do things. So, I thank you for your, your work on the financials and everything else that we're asking you to do, so I appreciate that. Well-deserved award. Um, with that, let's move on to the consent agenda. The council will consider the following items, which are routine and non-controversial in nature. Approval of minutes from the following meetings, our council meeting from January 16th, 2018, and our work session from that same date. And then, approval of the license application submitted by the city clerk to the council, and that list is on file in her office. And then, approval of a resolution accepting the following donations. $100 from Bonnie Bolash for the crystal ball, and $200 from Christmas Business Association for the same. And an approval of a resolution for Northwest Metro Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. Uh, we were... Were you gonna pull that?
Yes.
Okay, so we will not include the 4.4, um, on that consent agenda. We'll hit that. Item number one on our regular agenda. All right. So, that's everything except for 4.4. Looking for a motion on this item? Olga?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have open forum. This is an opportunity for people to speak to the council, uh, and to the community, and this is... We have one person wishing to speak during this. Uh, we have Alana Erickson, she is from the Seven Dreams Educational Foundation, and she's here to talk about the, uh, Erbash... No, not, uh, the...
Bird Bash.
Erbash, yes, okay.
Just a second.
I'm thinking of Robbinsdale. Please, right up there, yes. But don't be afraid to adjust the microphone.
All right.
All right, welcome.
This is good. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Adams and councilmembers. Um, thank you, Elizabeth and Ann, we swapped emails to get me here tonight, so I appreciate that.
Wonderful.
Um, uh, as Mayor Adams said, I'm a part of the Seven Dreams Education Foundation, which is a foundation that supports the Robbinsdale area schools. A foundation was, uh, brought together about a dozen years ago or so, there's some controversy over exactly when it started, or, uh, conflicting stories, but, um, it was a group of parents and staff members and, um, um, volunteers that got together and wanted to do something to support the district. It's evolved, um, over the last many years. Um, this is my sixth year on the council, or on the, um, on the board, and it's been a, it's been a treat to be involved in my kids' community in this way. Um, we have a whole lot of initiatives that we support throughout the district. Um, we have ongoing Instruments for Kids campaign, we have an ongoing STEM initiative to help support, um, and address areas of, uh, science and technology in the schools. We partner with the district, um, through a lot of measures as well, such as the, um, we help support the, the school-wide, or the district-wide spelling bee that comes up in the spring. We help with the Empty Bulls event, which I trust many of you know about, uh, that benefits both NIR and PRISM. So, a lot of different partnerships and initiatives. Um, one of our greatest, uh, or biggest things that we've developed over the last couple of years is, as Mayor, um, Adams mentioned, is the Bird Bash. Uh, "bird" comes from, uh, the high school mascot names. As you all likely know, there was a Robbinsdale High School, they were the Robins, and we currently have both Cooper and Armstrong being Hawks and Falcons. Our goal in developing the Bird Bash was to bring together a, um, bring together our community in celebration of the work that we're doing in the schools, and, um, really to dream up more for our kids. Um, and we hope to raise a little bit of money, but our goal really was to gather our community, uh, first and foremost. And, um, we've had tremendous success in doing so. We are coming up on our fifth event on Saturday. Uh, we generally draw about 400 people from across our seven cities, that's where our name comes from, the Seven Dreams Foundation. Um, and we have a focused project each year. This year, we're working to, uh, raise funds for the middle schools across our district. So, uh, direct beneficiaries of this project this year will be Fair Crystal, Sandberg Middle School, which reopened in Golden Valley, Plymouth Middle School, and Robbinsdale Middle School. Um, we're working with the media specialists in those schools and the district as a whole to, uh, really transform those spaces and bring them, um, create better learning environments for our students. So, our goal is to raise $50,000 this year. Um, the last four years, we've raised just shy of $200,000 for various projects in our district, um, and it's really just a great, it's a great event, it's a lot of fun. Um, open invitation to you and anybody in the community, we'd love to have you there, so... That's about it. I'm happy to come back anytime, talk to you more in depth about the foundation, all the work we're doing, but that's coming up. So, um, I have invitations, I'll leave with you. Um, if you are interested in coming and aren't on our, on our list yet, I'll tell you that we have a price, price hike at midnight tonight, it's $50, um, currently. Um, hotel charges us more if we start adding people as of tomorrow, so, if you are interested, uh, go ahead and get your...
Register by midnight.
Register online, yeah, yeah.
Where, where is it?
It's kind of a last-minute push here.
Where is it, and, uh, what time does it start?
Starts at 5 o'clock. Um, there's a seated dinner that will start officially at about 7:15, but 5 to 7, we have a silent auction, um, and a social hour. It's at the Marriott Northwest, just the old Northland Inn, that's what everybody knows it, knows it as, so, yeah. That's it. Because there's no space in any of our, our cities here to, that holds about 400 people, so, we've, we've looked.
Pretty large event.
Yeah, it's fun, you've been there, so, yeah.
Thanks, I have.
It's very exciting.
Those can go into Chris.
Very good, thanks so much, thanks for your time tonight, for working you here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right. And was there anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? Anyone else? Seeing nobody, uh, we will close open forum. And that puts us on to our regular agenda. Uh, first item will be, what, from the consent agenda, 4.4, approval of a resolution for Northwest Metro Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. Our chief is here to speak a little bit about that, welcome, chief.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. So, as you may or may not know, the Northwest Drug Task Force actually has been in existence for over 30 years. We have had this joint powers agreement, uh, with the various cities for several years. The reason why it's coming before you tonight is because the elimination of the City of Golden Valley. Uh, due to staffing levels, they've decided to pull out of the Northwest Drug Task Force, which leaves us with the six cities and Hennepin County. Uh, this task force, or this agreement is a three-year agreement, so we will come back to you in 2021, I believe, the end of '21, maybe '22, uh, to come back, uh, to, just to review the, the agreement and to make sure that everything is okay, as we review it every three years.
All right, are there any further questions from the council on this?
I have just a few.
Go ahead.
So, we have, we staff one person?
We do. Each city staffs one person in the task force.
And that's a full-time?
Correct. It's a full-time investigator.
Okay. And then, what, what kind of work do they do?
Yeah, good question. So, each, uh, each city has various investigations that they do, and they also help other neighboring cities that are part of the task force. They are each, um, given certain, uh, caseloads that they have regarding narcotics or different, uh, drugs that are being, um, unfortunately into each individual city, and that individual investigating officer is assigned that case.
Um, what's the problem right now? What's, what are we, what's the trend?
Uh, there's a lot of heroin out there, unfortunately. There's a lot of illegal prescription drugs that are going on right now. Unfortunately, each city is seeing an increase in opioid addiction and opioid overdoses.
Okay. Okay. You said 30 years, has this been going on for 30 years?
We have, we have been involved in the Drug Task Force for over 30 years, yes.
Cool.
Just a comment, Chief Reverend, I'm surprised, I guess I don't know why Golden Valley has pulled out. You said it's a staffing issue, given this increase in this problem. It's, I'm sad that they aren't able to participate. Maybe they have, maybe they have other programs or staffing to address this issue.
I believe that they are involved in VOTIF, which is a Hennepin County, uh, program, and so, it's, VOTIF stands for Violent Offender Task Force. Um, and VOTIF also deals with narcotics, so they may be, uh, looking at their resources using and regarding Hennepin County.
Sure. Thanks.
Okay, Elizabeth. I just wanted to hear a little bit more about what you're doing.
Sure.
Thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
All right, looking for a motion on that item? John?
I make a motion approving the resolution for the Northwest Drug, Metro Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement.
All right, looking for a second, Elizabeth?
Second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, item 1-1 on the regular agenda, the council will consider adopting disbursements over $25,000 by the Finance Department, and I will read those into the record. Uh, let's start with, uh, Crystal leased housing. February 1st, 2018, Kavanaugh Tiff note payment for $171,892. Health Partners for February 2018 health insurance premiums for $96,895. Hennepin County Treasurer, it's the first, for the first half of the 2018 assessment fee, $89,000 even. IRS for the federal FICA withholding taxes for pay date 1/12/2018, uh, $59,207. And for Met Council, uh, wastewater for February 2018 is $127,413. Motorola Solutions for radios, four mobiles, 44 portables, $210,113. Pelda and Sons for November 2017 Phase 15 Twin Oak Street reconstruction for $36,531. Para for, uh, employee and city required contributions for pay date 1/12/2018, $53,583. And Para for pay date 1/26/18, $55,111. Uh, SEH, November 2017, Phase 16 Skyway Street reconstruction and sanitary, uh, $38,459. Uh, same payee, December 2017, Bass Lake Road Streetscape, $25,666. Shingle Creek, uh, for 2018 member assessment, $27,741. West Metro Fire Rescue District for the January 2018 fire budget allocation for $95,305. Total disbursements, $25,000, a grade is $1,087,122.05. That is our list. Are there any questions on, any items on this list? Shingle Creek M, or WMO, help me out.
We s... Uh, we s...
Water.
Water management organization, it's a watershed in the northern portion of the city.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Olga?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, looking for a second, Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, next, the council will consider civil penalties for violation of tobacco license regulations by Walgreens. Uh, we have our city clerk, Chrissy, to address the council on this item. Welcome.
Thank you, mayor and council. As you recall, the Police Department conducts periodic compliance checks on tobacco licenses in the city throughout the year. Tobacco compliance checks were conducted on November 13th of last year, and as a result, Walgreens did not pass this compliance check. An employee of the business has since pleaded guilty to the sale of tobacco to a minor. Notice of this license violation and tonight's meeting was mailed to the business owner on January 23rd. City staff has received verification of the notice, and it was received by the business. I do believe that the store manager from Walgreens is here tonight to address the council. Therefore, at this point, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to see if there are any comments from the business owner.
All right. Thank you. Uh, first off, any questions, clarifications from council in relation to the report? Seeing none, uh, city, or the manager, if you could please step forward? So, you had a statement you wanted to present, not wrote, you're just...
Not really.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, like, I don't know why this happened, I was like, we have the policy and the system in place to prevent this.
Okay.
Just human error, unfortunately. We have issued a final written warning to the employee, which is company policy, and then also have reissued and made everybody sign our policy agreement.
So, you've reaffirmed your policy?
Yeah.
Okay. For those who weren't involved. Go ahead, John?
If you could briefly tell us what the procedure is for, um, tobacco sales in your store?
Company policy with Walgreens is anybody under the age of 40 is supposed to be ID'd. Um, and then, our registers actually prompt us, really under 40, yes or no, and then you hit yes or no, and then we just scan the ID, and just verifying that the ID matches the person.
Do we know how old the person was?
I don't. They're normally right around 18, just shy of.
Oh, okay.
Well, the person that sold it?
Yeah.
She's 20.
Okay.
So, right around the same. Should be it? I don't know. I just...
Any other questions? John?
So, when, when you scan in the ID, is it reading the magnetic strip off the ID, or are they...
No, they, there's...
They actually have to, they have to put in the...
They can enter or scan, uh, we typically tell them to scan.
Yeah.
This is more accurate, you can't...
And what date did she put in for this particular individual?
Didn't ID, didn't, nothing.
Didn't ID?
Yep.
She just sold him a pack of cigarettes?
Yep.
And then, you said you gave her final written warning?
Yep, she's on a final written warning.
So, she's, one more violation, she's fired, or she's...
Yep.
No, okay.
That's per Walgreens policy.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. All right, so, we have before us this case. Is there any discussions related to this?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
I thought Walgreens had stopped selling tobacco. Yeah, wasn't that their...
No, CVS.
CVS was, oh, thank you, all right.
Yeah.
A little commercial, I guess.
Yeah. All right.
I had the same thought, though, I was like, I didn't know you still sold cigarettes, but...
You do. So, staff is recommending $750 with one-day license suspension. Do we want to have any conversation over, around that, or is there a motion? John?
I believe we should go with the policy as written, that's the recommendation of the staff.
I think that's...
Is that a motion?
No, hold on, go ahead, Elizabeth.
I was just gonna say, I think that that's a little bit much. We can go up to 750. We very often, when it's a first violation, do not go up to 750, because it's really those extreme cases, especially when somebody doesn't come down. Here, the manager came down and talked to us, they've assured us it's not gonna happen again. It, I really don't think that they will let it happen again. It's, and if it happens again, we can slap them with the, up to 1,500.
The, uh, yeah, the next violation would increase pretty rapidly.
It would.
And, you know, that's, that's when, if it starts reoccurring, that becomes more serious in my mind. Um, generally speaking, the way I like to see it done, and I think we've done this a few times, we've taken away the suspension, and we've done some type of monetary.
Yes.
So, I don't know if, if we want to continue in that grain or not, uh, it's kind of up to us.
So, I don't know if, why in particular, but I, I'm generally with you on that particular thing. I think normally what we see is that when you're, um, when it's a, um, liquor store and it's a license suspension, would basically close your shop down for the day. Obviously, Walgreens gets a percentage of their sales from tobacco products, but not all of it, so, um, that factors in to my thinking on this, that I don't, I don't mind the penalty.
The suspension?
Yeah, I, I don't, not on this, not in this instance.
Yeah. You know, I think the last time we've done something like that, we kind of were trying to stay consistent as we're not going to the max. I mean, it's, it's kind of strange saying we're consistent when we're not going to the, to the maximum level, but that's kind of where we've been. Olga?
Yeah, I'm still thinking about this. I am never in favor of the first violation license suspension. Uh, the financial piece, um, is also really steep to do 750 for the first time, I'm more of like a, I don't know, 500 range. Um, and with the fact that it is Walgreens, I don't want to slap them with a higher penalty just because they are a bigger business. I don't really personally, at this point, don't see how that's effective.
Okay.
Or consistent, anyway, that's just my own gut feeling.
The funny thing in this particular case, though, is if we suspend the license for tobacco, it's highly likely that they're actually going to lose less than if we struck, if we slapped them with a $750 fine. I would be very surprised if they sold that much in tobacco products.
It would have to be $750 in profit, not just, not, not just gross sales.
Exactly.
So, I mean, you're talking, uh, that's a lot of cigarettes.
That's a, that's a lot of cigarettes.
Yep. John?
I would like to hear a little bit about the cost of us, you know, implementing this policy, what it costs for, for us court-wise, you know, filing with the Hennepin County. Can you, can the city clerk give us a little insight to that, possibly?
Our cost as a city?
Yeah, because we, we have to, obviously, we regulate, you know, tobacco sales and liquor sales, I mean, that's part of us as a municipality. Um, I think also with that comes, uh, we have to file with the, uh, with the county and, uh, required by law to regulate this industry.
Let's take that to the chief, Chief Reverend.
Thank you, mayor and council. I don't have an exact number for you, what I can tell you is, um, as you know, we pay legal fees to our prosecuting attorney, so whenever an unfortunate incident happens like this at a business, uh, that person ends up having to go to court, and then we have to pay, obviously, our prosecuting attorney, uh, to, obviously prosecute this crime. And then, obviously, staff time with the fact of the city clerk and what she has to do with this, and then staff time of our officers that, uh, actually go out and do the actual enforcement of the tobacco, um, violations.
Okay. John?
So, lastly, if we reduce the amount of the fine, who picks up the difference?
I don't think she said it was 750, she said she didn't know.
All right. Well, it is, obviously, there's, if we can...
There are costs.
Use costs, yeah.
Yeah.
If it's, uh, if there's anything over the amount that we decide to assess in this case, I mean, who picks up the difference?
We don't have that information.
Well, I mean, obviously, this, I mean, the city, I mean, the city incurs a cost of everything related to this.
Yeah.
I mean, but we don't have a, a number, so...
Yep.
It would be curious to know at least how much it would cost to have the attorney fees. I, I would, I would like to know that, just on average.
Yeah, we can break it down, I can ask him and break it down for you.
Yeah, that would be helpful, especially in the future, as we're looking at these cases, because that is a valid point.
I can ask him.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah.
Good question.
I would like to stop looking at these cases.
Hmm.
I would like you to just check IDs. Doesn't seem that difficult. And I'd be, I'm frustrated with it, so...
Right. Thank you, chief. All right. All right, Olga?
I was gonna make a motion to, goodness, impose, uh, $750 fee for the violation and no license suspension for Walgreens.
All right. Thank you, looking for a second on that? I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Roll call?
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Kolb.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Nay.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Next item is of similar, um, so, Chrissy will go over that case as well, thank you.
Thank you again, mayor and council. Uh, the facts of the violation are the same as the previous violation. A compliance check was conducted on November 13th of last year. Lublicher did not pass this compliance check, an employee of the business has since pleaded guilty to the sale of tobacco of a minor. Uh, notice of this violation in tonight's meeting was mailed to the business owner on January 23rd, and, um, we received verification that the business owner received the notification. Um, I believe Mr. Dubay is here tonight to speak to the council as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions to staff on this, to Chrissy? Seeing none, Mr. Dubay?
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Good to meet you.
I'm Mr. Mayor, city manager, employees. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Uh, just for the record, my name's Dave Duban, the Chief Marketing Officer for, uh, Benchtime Marketing Corporation. I have a lot to talk on this topic, so, um, I think the first thing is, I would like to volunteer for a task force here in the city as we go through these types of penalties to create a penalty matrix, so you can have a precedence and set it fairly. Um, I think that's needed. Let's, let's, you want me to start at the top?
Sure.
Start at the top, you're already paying for the police department, right? Why should I have to pay for Officer Robles to come out to do a decoy check when he's already on payroll? I'm already paying city taxes to, to cover that, within Hennepin County, okay? Same thing with your county attorney, your city attorney. Troy or whoever, we're already paying those people, they're already on salary, so, so you're gonna break it out by every different case of, of what you pay somebody already? It's already established, right? Number two, um, the employees, as the employees are charged in criminal cases, they pay a fine. This employee, uh, of mine, actually, ex-employee, paid $250 on a fine, so that is actually the recovery cost for the criminal case itself. One of their notes that I have, you know, I think part of that matrix needs to include, like, corrective actions, um, it also needs to sit protocols for the decoys and things, and I'll share my case, um, without providing any admission and still withholding my right to, uh, appeal for a hearing or for civil court, um, but I'll gladly share with you my situation if you'd like to hear it.
Sure.
Okay. So, I was actually standing in the store at the time the decoy came in, and, uh, I, I guess a couple things, first of all, and maybe this is some feedback for the police chief and the police department. When, uh, when the previous detective did these types of checks, it was very, um, uh, not sneaky. So, a little bit different approach, I think, with the, with the police department, how they handled this. I actually was letting my dog out, uh, out of the building to take a break, and they're in a construction truck, they're all in, I believe it was traffic vests, and it looks like a construction crew that's sitting in the truck. And that wasn't the tactic that was taken previously on, on previous checks. So, I'm not sure what policy has changed, or what procedure has changed, or maybe it's because the off... the officer has changed. I'm not sure what's changed inside the police department. But it's just, it wasn't normal. So, now, I used to be a police officer, right? I understand that at times you, you need to be stealth, right? So, I understand that. I just think, when they came into the store, they were wearing traffic vests and things, and then pulled their guns and badges out, or their, had their, showed their guns and their badges. It was just, it was odd, the way it was handled, okay? In my situation, I can't speak for the others. Previous to that, it was pretty normal. Had a decoy come in, I believe, forget the other officer's name, that used to be the detective, Justin Treffalo?
Sure.
Okay. So, it was just handled differently, right? Justin's approach was different. Uh, after I spoke with Officer Robles in the store, it was just a different approach. The, uh, in, in my situation, I was actually speaking Spanish to a customer that was in line. I was actually in front of the counter, and my employee was behind the counter checking people out. And, uh, when the decoy came up, my employee assumed that I was already speaking Spanish to that person because that person was nodding, so she thought I knew this person was speaking Spanish. She went about what type of alcohol they were gonna purchase. Well, then he asked for tobacco. When I asked Officer Robles, can I talk to the decoy? Can I see the decoy's ID? I couldn't see any of that evidence on the spot. Standing right here, why can't I see that? Why can't the decoy come back into the store? Why am I standing here tonight, trying to defend this when I haven't seen any police record? I haven't seen any court record? I get a notice from the city, I don't have any supporting documents, and you want me to, to either admit or deny to this pleading? Seems a little unfair, and then you're gonna make a decision here today. By the way, this is an administrative hearing, right? This is not a civil court. It's not a court here. It's an administrative hearing that you have here. So, I think how it's presented, even in your agenda meeting tonight, that's a civil fine, et cetera, I, I just think that a lot of things need to change. Obviously, we made a mistake, right? The employee made a mistake, she was terminated immediately on the spot. I didn't doubt Officer Robles that, uh, that, uh, the employee did something wrong, that she served a decoy that was underage. I didn't question that. I did ask, can I come in? Can I see his ID? Can I see what happened? He said, no, you need to stand over here, you need to talk to your employee separately. Okay, if that's how we're gonna do business in Crystal, then I'm gonna tell my employees, don't say anything to the police. Don't make any admissions. So, just the way it was handled, just, uh, doesn't sit right with me.
All right.
The, uh, what I would like to ask, and, you know, it's been a small business here, what I'd like to ask is, and I know that you had a discussion here about penalties and suspensions, during the winter months, cash on hand is limited. So, I would much rather take a, a suspension, a couple of days' suspension, versus a, a penalty, a monetary fine. And you have to remember too, that like with the convenience store, the other store, uh, it's just tobacco sales. So, I'm in an alcohol store, a liquor store. Uh, so, just the, any penalties that you incur would only affect my license for tobacco. We've tried to do the right things, and the employee just, you know, made a mistake. So, apologize for that. Uh, they were terminated on the spot. We do have corrective actions in place. The, uh, we do have the posted ID check on the front door. So, actually, per alcohol standards, and here's where the tobacco standards lack in the state, and it's not necessarily the city of Crystal's fault, just in general, there needs to be improvements. The alcohol, there's alcohol training, although it's, has been in Crystal post-decoy, which I think should be pre-decoy. Train the people, educate, and then enforce. Uh, but there is no tobacco sales type of education that I'm aware of. But we do post on the door, so we follow the alcohol standards. We post on the door about ID checks, we train our employees of ID checks. We establish, uh, ID check penalties and rewards type of program. All those are laid out in the alcohol standard, but we apply them also to tobacco standard. So, for the stores that, that don't sell tobacco, uh, they're at a disadvantage because they really don't have any guidelines of, of what to do, what types of policies to set. Any questions for me? Appreciate your time tonight.
All right, thank you. Questions, John?
Again, if you could just reiterate to me, what is your procedure in terms of IDing the individual that comes to your store?
Yeah, Minnesota State statute says if they look under thirty years old, that you should ID them. That's kind of the recommendation for alcohol. Um, that's what we do with tobacco, that's applied also. It's in a written employee handbook and a standard operating procedure that's provided to all employees. We have a private company that also trains for alcohol standard. Trains employees.
And do you have any guidelines at the register to help the individual with their determining the date? I mean?
Sure, definitely. So, the, the door policy is visible from the, uh, from the point of sale, from the checkout. And, uh, we also have the book, um, for state IDs, uh, Mexican and Canadian IDs, the identification book.
Any other questions from the council? All right.
Thank you. I mean, I, you know, it's, we made a mistake, we definitely need to be held accountable. Um, I just think we can do a better job together, so.
I would like to, I would definitely like to hear more about that. Be even off to the side after we're done.
Sure, sure. Yeah, thank you. And, and Officer Robles has been awesome. He was open to all the feedback that I gave him, um, so.
I really like your idea of the task force.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, we're, I, I have the same pain that you has to. I mean, the employee gets terminated right on the spot, and I tell her she's gotta go home, and she's crying, and, you know, it's, uh, you, you try to do the right things, and I have to do my own enforcement inside the store. So, but we can do that better somehow. I think proactive training, uh, tobacco training, um, making it mandatory for people. If you're gonna give them a license, make them get educated. And then, if you're gonna do mandatory enforcement, have mandatory education, whether it's alcohol or tobacco.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. All right.
I just, I have a question, so.
Sure, go ahead.
Was the decoy asked for an ID? I mean, were they IDed at all when they were in the store? What was, and if they were, what did the, what, what was the ID, what did it look like? You know, I guess, so.
Go ahead, chief.
Mayor members of the council, no, they were never asked for identification.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
And this is the first offense, right?
Yes.
Okay. I believe in the past with liquor stores, we've done, we've, we've lessened it, as we were talking about earlier, where we didn't have the day suspension, and we left it down to about five hundred. Is that correct? I think that's what we've been doing lately.
Yes. John?
I recommend that we, uh, we postpone the violation penalty until we determine what the actual cost is. We have a better understanding of what, uh, if we reduce the fine, um, exactly what, uh, how much money is being picked up by the city, AKA the taxpayers.
Okay.
That's a good point, but I wish that would've been brought up before the Walgreens decision.
Yep.
This would not be fair.
Yeah, you know, I, I kind of agree that if we do a change, we, we don't do it based on what's on the table right now. We'll just kind of base it off of past history. I think there is some apparent, uh, desire to kind of take a look at this again anyway, from the council perspective. Olga?
Um, you know, with Walgreens, seven fifty fines, you know, they're a bigger business, so they, they, they have more resources. Um, this is a smaller business, so I'm good with lowering the financial fee. Um, I mean, I get the cash flow, you mentioned that. However, you know, you fail a test, you fail a test, so, um, leaving the suspension off is a good break for me, so.
So, you're suggesting?
I'm just making a comment. I'm not making that.
Five hundred?
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Looking for a motion?
I'm thinking, sorry, I'm noodling here.
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Uh, civil fine of five hundred dollars and no license suspension.
Okay. Looking for a second on that one? No second, motion fails. Another motion. Go ahead, Nancy.
I'd like to make a motion for a one-day suspension and a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. Tobacco suspension.
All right. We got a motion on the floor, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Adams?
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Nay.
Councilmember Dahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Kolb?
Nay.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
It's a tie, motion fails.
Okay. I'll make a motion, five hundred, five hundred dollar penalty, one-day suspension. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Olga. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Members opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call?
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Nay.
Councilmember Dahl?
Nay.
Councilmember Kolb?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Nay.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
It's also a tie, motion fails.
Somebody hit the sweet spot, please.
Yes, please.
Um, hold, hold on. No, please not, yeah.
The idea between, behind what Nancy proposed was, as he said, that the suspension for a day would not be as harsh to him.
Correct.
As the money.
Correct. So, so you're proposing more leniency?
No, I was trying to do a compromise, perhaps. And I, I have another motion, if.
Let's, I just have a little chat, quick. Make sure. Um, yeah, I, and I felt that leniency went a little far in terms of trying to keep things on an even keel between, uh, Walgreens and, in Lubliker. So, because, because the, the, you look at the amount of sales for one-day suspension, that's the max we can do. There's a, it's nowhere close to five hundred dollars. And that's why I'm kind of looking at it a little bit higher.
Okay, so, trying to get it to that.
So, I'm, I'm just trying to look at fairness between the two.
Yes. Yes.
Is there anybody on the council who would wish to hear from Mr. Dubay again? All right.
Some of the council members had a question about revenues and things like that, so I'll share this with you from my store. We, do you want to average probably two hundred dollars per day in cigarette sales? There's probably two dollars per pack, uh, so twenty percent of that is what the actual revenue is versus the gross. Not sure what a competitor like Walgreens would do, but maybe that's helpful. You know, I, I think part of the, um, matrix, the penalty matrix that might help the city should include what's the revenue from the sales? You know, how do you compare? How do you make it fair between different sized organizations? Does that help? Because you had some questions about the amount of revenue. For me, personally, I'd rather take a five-day suspension than give up my cash on hand.
Yep. I understand that. We don't have that option.
Sure.
Yeah, up to one day, unfortunately.
Oh, I see, so you're restricted to?
We're restricted to.
So, maybe it's a time for, you know, modification or in a wider sliding scale for the city code then?
Yep.
Any other questions for me? I just wanted to answer that question for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I, I don't have a question, I just want to, do want to reiterate. I think we do need a matrix, absolutely, so we don't just go back and forth with arbitrary, like, trying to find the sweet spot, like, it's not time, not time well spent. Uh, and, uh, also finding out how much the city pays, what exactly our expenditures are. It's unfortunate, it's been going on for so many years without any knowledge of, you're just throwing a dart in the dark and, and hope you, you, you really punish somebody when it looks like, you know, we're not getting close. So, yeah, this is frustrating, just somehow move on.
All right.
Can I?
Jeff, you might have something good.
No, I don't, because I'm gonna, I don't, because I'm gonna argue with you, because I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I just wanted to clarify, there's nothing arbitrary going on here. I, I think what, what you're seeing is people trying to come up with what they feel is the correct, is the correct penalty. There's nothing arbitrary about what's, what's happening. It, it's, it's, it's what's the right, and that's why, I, I believe it's very important to, to, you can have all the matrices you want, but if you don't have any leeway in the process, then there's no way for, there, there's no way to take into account the, the, the facts of the case. I, I mean, I'll, I'll go back and say, when I got here the first time, um, I asked for the police report because I wanted to know what the, and that wasn't part of the standard protocol before, because it was, here's what's on the grid, we just do that. That's arbitrary. And so, uh, so I, so, you know, you look at what the, what the details of the case are, you look at what the business is doing, you look at, you know, uh, these different factors, and then you come up with what you think is the right penalty.
I think we can have a good combination of feelings and facts that we can rely on. I think right now, we kind of morgue by feeling, and, and this is not a very good guide for us. This isn't helpful, this particular matrix that we have. A good balance would be nice to have.
Yeah, I don't know that I, uh, wanna really base it on feeling. I, I do like having the leeway of having an increase in, in using the full, uh, the full civil fine and suspension with, if it's a case that's, um, just seems a little bit more cavalier or...
We have had egregious cases in the past where we've hit the top penalty because there were, there were many, there were circumstances at the business that, that warranted that.
Correct.
It might help if we had information upfront about the, about the approximate amount of money that they would gross in a day on either alcohol or tobacco. Just having that idea, because it's gonna be much different for a business that sells that as their primary, their, their primary.
Oh, absolutely.
Item.
Absolutely.
In comparison to something like Walgreens. So, I think that that would help us a lot. We, I don't think we've really had a lot of issues with, with businesses like Walgreens where it's just this little, small thing on the shelf. But I would actually like to propose that we suspend one day and then put in a four hundred dollar fine.
That's a motion?
And that is my motion.
All right, looking for a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any additional comments?
Just clarification. So, there's gonna be a one-day suspension, and you're going to fine him four hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
And I feel that that brings you up to, closer to the seven hundred and fifty dollar mark like we did with, with Walgreens, but it's, it's doing it in a different way.
Okay, John?
I, my preference would be to suspend, um, you know, assessing the violation and the, until we have information of what it costs the city to file this, uh, um, I mean, obviously, we don't know. We're just guessing. We're just picking a number, and we're, and we're just picking a...
I hate to get all parliamentary, but there's a motion on the table, so, is there a second?
We do have a second.
And I'd call the question.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Dahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Kolb?
Nay.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Motion carries.
All right, so regardless of how we feel about this particular vote, um, it's very clear we need to have some conversations in a work session.
And Dita.
And...
Correct.
I was hoping we wouldn't have to hit this again, but we are going to have to hit this again. Um, this just, it's not right. We gotta get there. All right. That was item two. Uh, item three, council will consider, no, that was item three. And item four, we are continuing until next council meeting, there's, no, item four is something completely different.
That was gracious.
Thanks, read the words. All right, item four is, uh, accepting Guy Mueller's resignation from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and to consider, uh, a resolution of appreciation for his service. We have our city manager, Ann Norris, here to comment and discuss that.
Uh, just as the mayor said, Guy Mueller has been a longtime active resident, and he is, uh, has given us his resignation from the Parks and Recreation Commission, actually, that was effective the day of his letter, because he is planning to relocate out of Crystal, he will still continue to serve on a couple of his other missions, uh, the Crystal Fund, as well as the watershed, but he is encouraging us to find a replacement for him, because he plans to move out of Crystal by the end of the year. So, staff thought it was appropriate to recognize all his contributions.
Right, and he is not here today, but we do have a fancy plaque for him, uh, which is a, a resolution of appreciation. And, yeah, he will continue to serve in many different areas in the, in the city until such time, uh, where he can't, but, uh, some of his time is going to preparing his house for sale and some other personal things, so, yeah, it's, it's great to still have him for another year in some of these other areas.
Right.
Uh, but he will be definitely a loss.
Very sorely missed.
So, uh, with that, looking for a motion on this resolution?
I'll make a motion to honor Guy Mueller.
All right, thank you.
Listen.
John?
I second their motion.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Next, the council will consider a resolution authorizing the financing program for installation of fire suppression systems. Uh, we have our community development director, John Sutter, here to comment and discuss that item. Welcome, John.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Adams and council members. Um, this is something we've talked about in some work sessions before, and I think we are ready to roll with it. Um, just a little bit of background for the public, um, in a city with, with older buildings, um, we have a situation where repeatedly we have new potential users of these buildings who potentially could make some investments in these buildings, and are sort of hit a, a roadblock, uh, when it comes to the need to install fire sprinklers because of their new proposed use. Now, for many years, the city has had a program to finance the installation of, uh, fire sprinklers or other fire suppression systems by using the special assessment process. The program was established over twenty years ago, uh, it was broadened slightly in two thousand and five. Uh, currently, it requires a ten-year repayment term with interest based on the interest charged on street reconstruction projects, which we're now done with those, so, um, we'd have to figure out some other way to calculate interest. And finally, it's seldom utilized, uh, the most recent one was over ten years ago, so, um, but we still have the problem of older buildings missing out on new uses and reinvestment because of code-required sprinkler systems. City council has expressed an interest in the city doing more to encourage the installation of these systems, and staff is, tonight is recommending eliminating the interest charge, but shortening the term to five years. So why? What is the public purpose? Well, obviously, to reduce the potential for loss of life, not only for the people in the building, but also the first responders who would have to, uh, come into the building in, in an emergency. Uh, to preserve and enhance the value of real property in the city, to prevent the emergence of blight in older buildings, and to improve the utilization of older buildings to create jobs and economic opportunities. And finally, to counteract the combination of physical constraints, building age, and market forces that make fire sprinklers infeasible for some properties. So what would the parameters be? Again, it would be paid back by a special assessment that would be requested by the property owner, paid back in five years with the regular property taxes each year. Again, there would be no interest charge. To protect the city from losses, the financing would be limited to twenty-five percent of market value. That's, that way, in the event of the property going into tax forfeiture, um, the amount being carried as a special assessment is a small fraction of the value of the property. And also to limit the, the exposure to the city's fund balances, financing would be capped at a hundred thousand dollars per land parcel. And the applicant must provide an escrow to cover the city's actual expenses. We're gonna have some attorney's fees and other cash expenses beyond staff time, um, that would be actual expenses to the city, and the applicant should cover those costs. So with that, tonight, we're asking you to consider adopting the resolution that would authorize this modified program for special assessment financing for fire protection systems, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the council relating to this issue? Any comments, additional comments? Okay.
Good program.
It's a good program.
Program, let's go. Thank you for working on it.
So, this kind of came out of an effort, uh, we have, we have in our building code a requirement for, uh, some continued, or, um, conditional use permits that require the building to be sprinkled in its entirety, or sprinkled just in the new contin, um, what's the word? Uh, conditional use permit space only, so it's either the whole building or just the new occupancy. And we made that change, uh, I think, last council meeting to where we made it so it's just that, uh, occupied space, not the whole building where it's required. Those are the only two parameters that are allowed by law. Um, so, this is kind of like the next step to help, um, with what we see as an unintended consequence of the sprinkler code to, um, it's actually, uh, I think prolonging some blight in some of our commercial properties. And this is just a way, until we fight this legislatively, to kind of give some relief to some, some businesses who wish to expand, but are going to hit that threshold of sprinkling, or some businesses that are vacant who can't afford, uh, that sprinkler system, so this is an attempt to help make that a little more affordable. Um, so, that's the most we can do today, and as we move forward with the legislature, uh, if we're able to move forward with the legislature, uh, we may see some law changes at the state level, we may not, but this is probably the best we can do today for what we see as, uh, some extended vacancies in some of our complexes in Crystal. So that's kind of, from my perspective, what, what this is for, so, looking for a motion on this one? Nancy?
I will make a motion to, for a resolution establishing a policy for special assessments for fire protection systems.
Thank you, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Elizabeth, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Members opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the, your work on that, yes?
Would like to make a motion, continuing item six point six to a future meeting.
All right. We need a second on that one, we do, John?
I second their motion.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It has continued. So next?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, if I could go back for one second to item six point four, Guy Mueller's resignation from Parks and Recreation Commission, I ask your permission to read the resolution into the record. I realize that everyone sitting up at the dais tonight knows who Guy is and understands what his history is.
Sure.
But I think people in the audience and people at home may not understand just the current caliber of person, volunteer that we're losing as he moves. Um, we also had mentioned, didn't mention, uh, Guy is moving to be closer to family, so that's a good thing for him, but it's a, it's a bad thing for, for us in Crystal, so, if I, if I may real quickly.
Go ahead, please do.
Read this into, into the record. Uh, resolution of appreciation for Guy Mueller, whereas Guy Mueller has been a longtime resident of Crystal and has been concerned and about and involved in local matters, and whereas Guy Mueller was first appointed to the Crystal Parks and Recreation Commission in the year of two thousand and resigned in two thousand and nine, and whereas in two thousand and sixteen, Guy Mueller was reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission and served as chair in two thousand and seventeen, as the commission developed the Park System Master Plan. And whereas in two thousand and twelve, Guy Mueller was appointed as Crystal's alternate citizen representative on the Bassett Creek Watershed Management Commission, and whereas in two thousand and thirteen, Guy Mueller was appointed as Crystal's citizen representative on the Bassett Creek Watershed Management Commission. Whereas Guy Mueller is a founding member of the Crystal Fund for Community Progress, an organization committed to improving Crystal, and whereas, as a commissioner of both the Parks and Recreation and Bassett Creek Watershed Commissions, Guy Mueller provided input and direction to maintaining and improving city parks, protecting the watershed and water quality, and enriching Crystal's quality of life, and whereas Guy Mueller has submitted his letter of resignation from the Parks and Recreation Commission dated January fifteenth, effective immediately, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Cr- Crystal City Council that Guy Mueller's resignation from the Parks and Recreation Commission be accepted, and Guy Mueller is hereby thanked for his dedication and commitment in volunteering his time and expertise to improve the Crystal community dated this February fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you for reading that.
It was longer than I thought. I made that suggestion.
Amazing, Guy.
Regretted it about third paragraph.
All right, let's move on to announcements. The city council will hold a work session, uh, with the planning commission on Thursday, February eighth, at six thirty PM in the conference room A at City Hall. City offices will be closed Monday, February nineteenth, for the President's Day holiday. Uh, next citizens' input time will be Tuesday, February twentieth, at six PM in conference room A at City Hall, and then the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, February twentieth, at seven PM here at City Hall. CBA, the Crystal Business Association, meets Wednesday, February twenty-first, eight thirty AM, uh, at Saint Therese, which is located at eight thousand Bass Lake Road in New Hope. And then, neighbors recognizing neighbors nominations, uh, will be accepted until Wednesday, February fourteenth. Forms are available on the city website, and can also be filled out at the Crystal Community Center. Uh, the selected neighbors will be recognized at the Crystal Ball on Saturday, March twenty-fourth, at the Crystal Community Center, and then the Crystal Ball will be held March twenty-fourth, uh, at the Crystal Community Center. Tickets are available both at the community center and the website. And that is our announcements. Nope, one more. Council meetings and work sessions are recorded and open to the public, and they may be viewed or listened to on our website. So that is it for written announcements. Are there any others that you would like to add? Any others? Seeing none? Well, maybe we do.
I would just, I would just comment again on the ball, because we're trying to, we're trying to push this. And also, the neighbors recognizing neighbors, please keep in mind, if you have anyone that you want to recommend for this award, which will be given out by the, the mayor, and, uh, I believe Sean Smith will probably be doing it, too, we are gonna be doing that at the Crystal Ball, and all of our nominations need to be in by February fourteenth. So if anybody helped you get out of a ditch recently, if anyone, uh, plowed your, your, your driveway, yes, exactly, they plowed your driveway without you having to ask for help, I, I don't know, you, I'm sure, there's been a lot of, of hectic roads out there lately, so you could probably find someone to say something nice about. And, um, please put that in at the Crystal Community Center, or you can do it online, and, uh, we will be choosing some, the, the council actually chooses the winners for this award. And then the Crystal Ball is coming up on March twenty-fourth, we're gonna have a really grand time, we're going to have a ten-piece band, the R Factor is going to be playing, we are going to have a catered event, it should be quite lovely, so, please come. And you can order those tickets online as well. It's thirty-five dollars for dinner and dance, or you can get dance tickets for ten dollars.
So just a reminder of why we're having a ball, first of all, it's winter, and there's not as much that we do in the winter, so it's a great time to fill some of our time and, and have some fun, but it's, it's, in the summer, we have, uh, our neighborhood parties, Night to Unite, and this is an opportunity to go beyond the neighborhood and bring our neighborhoods together, so that we, we do interact with the other neighbors in our community, so it's just another place for us to, to experience some fellowship and some community, so, that's, that's why we do it.